Order of the meeting of the Portsmouth City Council for Monday, January 4th, 2021, at 12 noon. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mr. Battle?
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Here.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Dot Whitaker?
Dr. Whitaker?
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Glover?
Here. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency due to the Novil Corona virus, Executive Order 51 on March 12th, 2020, and the local declaration of emergency ratified by the Portsmouth City Council, and due to the coronavirus pandemic, which is continuing in the Commonwealth of Virginia. This meeting is, this call meeting of the Portsmouth City Council is being held by video conference on the 4th day of January, 2021, without a quorum present in the City Council chamber, in order to reduce the likely spread of the coronavirus, in accordance with City Council Ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each council member is participating from their home or a remote location, and I am in the City Council chamber. Madam Clerk, could you read the rules for our speakers?
Yes, sir. City Council rules require a limit of up to three minutes to speak. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum, and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks shall be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than any particular member of City Council staff or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
We will continue on with the, with the agenda. We have reached item 21-07, Appointment of City Council Member. This will be a roll call vote, and we have as a member to be appointed Mr. Christopher Woodard. Is there a motion on the floor to accept this appointment?
Set move until it's, uh...
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Madam Clerk, do you have that? Is, is, is there any, uh, is there any unread, unread readiness to the motion at this time before we take the vote? Hearing none? If you could move forward to vote?
Mr. Barnes?
Yeah.
Mr. Battle?
Aye.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dot Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Nay.
That item was adopted by...
It was two nays.
I think you said yea.
I said nae.
I'm sorry. Then that's for the port city. Notice the City Council, at this time, we ask if everyone could please, um, could please mute your device. I will swear, Mr. Woodard, in, uh... Mr. Woodard, you might want to, you might want to take it.
You'll make my dear?
You would raise your right hand and place your left hand on the bottom, and repeat after me. Repeat after me, I in your name.
I, Christopher Woodard, Jr.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties...
And perform all the duties.
Upon me as City Councilman...
Upon me as City Councilman.
Of the City of Portsmouth...
Of the City of Portsmouth.
According to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. We'll get you to sign this afterwards, okay? You can return to your seat, and you can cut on your camera.
Mayor? We're waiting for the clerk to, to assume her position. If you all would just bear with us, we'll be there momentarily.
Thank you, sir.
On behalf of all of my colleagues, and as Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, I want to congratulate and welcome our newest council member, Councilman Christopher Woodard. Can we all give him a hand?
Thank you.
We have reached the next item on our agenda, which is the election of Vice Mayor. Do I have a motion on the floor to move forward with the election of Vice Mayor?
Councilmembers, we need a nomination.
We need a nomination. And then we'll go through the motion. So, we need a nomination at this time. Councilmember Battle, Paul Battle?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Barnes, who's Vice Mayor.
Set up here.
Second, I'm a third.
Do we have any other nominations for Vice Mayor?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke?
I nominate myself for Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. So we have a, a motion, we have two candidates that are nominated for Vice Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, so...
I need a second on Lucas Burke.
Right, we need, we need a second?
We don't need a li, we don't need...
I, I didn't think so, okay. So, so we have two candidates that has been proposed for election to Vice Mayor in the City of Portsmouth. Those two candidates are Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke and Councilmember DeAndre Barnes. We have, we have a motion which is not needed for a second, and it is time for us, are there, are there any discussions on readiness to the nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Would, 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 would Councilmember, would Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke want to make a comment at this time, or would Councilmember DeAndre Barnes wish to make a comment at this time? Hearing none?
Big question.
Was your hand up, uh, Councilmember Paul Battle?
No, Mr. Mayor, I was merely resting my cheeks.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. So we will, we will proceed forward with the vote?
Mayor?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Yes, um, considering the motion and, um, that I did nominate myself, I would have not preferred to have done that. I withdraw my name.
So you are withdrawing your name from consideration as Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke. So now we're ready for, for the vote? Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yeah.
Mr. Battle? Sir, you're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Nay.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dot Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Nay.
That item needs adopted by...
Congratulations, uh, on your election as Vice Mayor of the City of Portsmouth, Councilmember DeAndre Barnes. Let's give him a hand. We have reached item 21-09, which is ratification of boards, committees, liaison appointments for City Council. This will be a roll call vote. Everyone should have received the liaison listing for 2021. Do I have a motion to accept the listing?
Set move.
Set move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any unreadiness, um, to, to, to the motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yeah, it's, um, I just want to raise a point, uh, that the, um, the memo that was submitted to us, um, with those candidates, with the appointment of the boards and liaison, um, I'm not in agreement, uh, with the allocation, and I'm, I'm asking that, um, we revisit how we have been allocated to the different boards and commissions, um, now that we have a Vice Mayor on board, uh, if the two of you, if it's okay with council, uh, if the two of you would consult and come back to council at our next regular meeting, um, I know that I'm not in agreement with the, um, allocation of your appointments.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Dr. Whitaker, for your comments. Are there any other comments relating to...
I agree. I agree. Oh, I'm sorry, DeAndre.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor Barnes, um, duly noted. Are there any other comments? Yes, um, Councilmember Paul Battle?
Yes, I'm in agreement as well.
Okay. Are there, are there any other comments, uh?
Yes, Mayor.
Ca, hold on, Councilmember Lisa Lucas Burke, uh, Councilwoman, you have the floor?
Yes, thank you. Um, there was, uh, one, uh, liaison position that was left off, the STOP Inc., it's a community action, uh, board, I don't know if that was left off because it's, um, not one of the city boards, but it is one that we appoint to, um, so if Deborah could advise about that appointment, um, being in the list?
That particular appointment is listed under the mayor. I wasn't aware of anyone else being on that board.
Okay. The community action.
Okay. Councilmember Woodard?
Yes, um, I do believe, uh, with the addition of me, uh, you know, with the newly appointed seat, that we should revisit it, because I see some things up here that may play towards my strength, and, um, being that you and the new Vice Mayor could revisit that and, um, see what we can all do to make sure that we are allocated to the correct boards.
Duly noted, sir. Thank you. Are there, are there any other, other questions or any, any comments? Based on the response, um, it, it seems to be the pleasure of majority of council to sit, um, myself and the Vice Mayor to have a conversation and look at the allocation of the liaison positions, and I will get with, uh, Madam Clerk and, um, Vice Mayor, she will then contact you with a date here this week, so that we can get this settled by the next council meeting, which will be on January the 12th. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor.
Just so we make sure we're doing it in order, there was a motion and a second, can that be rescinded so that, um, the record will reflect that?
We, we, sir, we, we can rescind the motion, and we will then, um, proceed in, in the, in the manner which was discussed.
Who brought the motion?
Mr. Moody and Mrs. Lucas Burke.
It'd be best if they withdrew that motion, if they're, if you don't want to proceed on it today. I withdraw my motion.
Right, and I know, uh, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, I believe you already withdrew yours.
Withdrawed the second, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we all clear then?
Yes.
The next item is 21-10, Adoption of a Resolution Accepting the 2021 Calendar for City Council This will be a roll call vote. Is there a motion to accept the count, calendar for 2021 City Council Meeting?
Set move.
Is there un, is, is there any unreadiness toward the motion?
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, um, Councilwoman Lisa Lucas Burke? You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, didn't notice that there was a retreat scheduled date on there, is that something that we're going to discuss later, or is that an option that we're not considering this year for this council?
Well, it, it, it is absolutely something that we will be discussing, and, uh, when we, you know, after this meeting, we will, we will look at the appropriate dates. Uh, one of the things that I was attempting to do is, uh, the desire, um, I was going to meet with everyone to see if the desire to have that meeting was going to be for all us to participate in person, and so we have to have a conversation with each council member to make sure that everyone is agreeable to participating in person, of course, with proper, uh, protocols, face masks, social distancing, and the like, but that is the conversation that I had planned to have this week, and then we will get back to everyone as the schedule, uh, as to the schedule on the upcoming retreat or, or business meeting.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Are there any other questions, um, relating to the matter?
Councilmembers, we do have someone registered to speak on this item, and that's Mr. Mark Adalde Giotrowski.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, honorable members. Thank you. Good afternoon, members of council and fellow Portsmouth, Portsmouthians. Uh, oh, feedback. Okay, just one, just need to hear the sound of my voice once, not both times. Um, so I share Councilmember Lucas Burke's, uh, concern about the absence of a retreat from your calendar, and I heard the conversation about setting one up. I am not in favor of you all having an in-person retreat. Part of every retreat has been an opportunity for the public to be present, even though the public has no speaking role during the, the time that the retreat is moving forward. Um, but the public should be able to see and hear what is going on, and I think that would be very difficult to accomplish in a safe fashion in any venue. Even if you could set up a venue in which the public could be present, all interested members of the public could likely not be accommodated in that space, so there'd be a rationing question of resources. I believe that this is an opportunity for you all to move into the 21st century and take advantage of highly evolved technology whereby you would continue in the virtual mode, and you would have the presentations occurring virtually just as you do in a work session. I know that the feel of the room is different when it's a virtual room as opposed to an actual room, but you need to, uh, you need to accept the reality of the times in which we live. So, for the sake of trying to build a team, which is what is, is the basic work of a, of a retreat, you would need to move forward on this a pace, not, not deferring it until perhaps the summer, when optimistically, we might be farther along and under fewer restrictions. The other thing that, that the technology allows you to do is to break it into segments. You could have a series of workshops over, uh, a particular span of time, and I think that might be something you would want to consider and investigate. So, thank you very much, congratulations to the newly elected Vice Mayor and the newly appointed member of council, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Mr. Battle, uh, Mr. Councilman Paul Battle, you have the floor.
Uh, may I comment on, um, what the citizens just, uh, referenced too?
Sure, sir.
I went on those retreats, and really, I think that they're designed for a junior high school student, or for a person that's not becoming of a person who represents the citizens of a city. It has been an insult to Woodrow Wilson High School, to Crowlock High School, Gossie Norcom High School, and to the Manham Mustangs, for us to visit a retreat to try and learn how to respect and work with one another. I will not participate this year, I did in the past, because I think it's beneath us, and it's truly insulting to every instructor ever taught at those institutions, as well as our loving citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Paul Battle, thank you for your comments, and all of those things are certainly are, are important. If there are no other, other questions, um, Councilman Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, um, just want to make sure, are we, we still on the adoption of the calendar?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, we are.
Right, okay.
And that will be a roll call vote, but we need a motion first and a second.
Move for approval.
You have a motion and a second? Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Barnes?
Yeah.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dot Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Woodard? Mayor Glover?
Yes. Thank you all so much for participating today. I believe this has been very productive, and I'm anticipating good things from all of our members of council. I truly look forward to moving in a bold new direction together.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, uh, Councilman Dr. Whitaker?
Yes, sir. Before the meeting is adjourned, um, there are, uh, some items that I think, uh, council should take up into consideration. We, we didn't, uh, actually approve the agenda at the beginning, and there were, uh, three items that, uh, would like...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear what you said, please, repeat that?
We, there are three items that I would like for council to consider, um, as part of our agenda today. The agenda wasn't actually approved at the beginning, and, um, I would like to, um, bring forth three items if there are no objections from council.
Uh, let's, let's, let's hear what the items are first, sir.
It's, it's, it's okay, there's, there's no objection from council for me to bring that...
I, I don't believe that, I, does anyone on council object to, uh, Councilmember Dr. Whitaker bringing forth three items for consideration?
All right. Uh, the first, the first item is directing, uh, the city clerk to publish an announcement, uh, for the full-time city attorney position, um, if, if she could come back with, uh, that, uh, announcement for us to review, consider, discuss at our next council meeting.
Okay.
If there's no objection from council on that.
Well, first of all, we need to, we need to make sure we're clear on where that gets, gets, um, sent from. I don't know if there needs to be a consultation with the Human Resource Director, anyone in that office, so I, I, I don't have any particular announcement, um, objection right now on that.
Well, yeah, that's, that's why, that's what I'm saying, at our next meeting, if that would be something that's in order for us to move on.
Yes, it's, it, it would be acceptable for us to get all the information together so that we can be able to move forward in our next meeting. Yes, sir.
Okay. And, and the second item, um, as many of us and the residents of Portsmouth and around the area, um, witnessed, um, much of the, uh, legal issues that, uh, took place with, uh, council member, uh, Lisa Lucas Burke, and having to go through all of that unnecessary process, as well as, uh, the others that were criminally charged, uh, but particularly with, uh, council member Lisa Lucas Burke, because of her position as a council member, um, there was a section of our charter that was used, uh, inappropriately, and I would like for, um, our council, um, to, uh, direct the city attorney to inform us on, at our next meeting or as soon as possible. to inform us at our next meeting or as soon as possible the steps for us to rescind or remove section 3.11 of the city charter, which deals with non-interference. I received an email which Councilman Moody requested for some research to be done on the non-interference language and charters around the region. And I see that as a result of that, we find out that Hampton does not have that language, nor does the City of Richmond. And just would like us to, our next council meeting, the city attorney to give us the procedures for us to act on this as soon as possible following the correct legal steps if there are no objections from council.
Dr. Whitaker, there are no objections. But if you would pause for a second, we do have a request to speak from Councilman Moody on that same matter that you are discussing. So if you would defer and let him speak on that matter, and then you can have your third point. Is that okay with you?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Councilmember Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'm in total agreement with Dr. Whitaker. In fact, I brought that up during the previous council. Previous council was in support of adding it to our legislative package to do a charter change. In fact, Mr. Interim Attorney Stromberg gave us some language on how to address that. And I think the timetable had passed to add it to the package this year. I think it would be good if Interim Attorney Stromberg update this council. And hopefully, this council will reaffirm the importance of adding that because I think it's a travesty to have a council member like Ms. Burke threaten to remove her from an elected position over expressing an opinion. People who elect us really expect us to express opinions on the issues at hand or even people within the city government. And that's, I think, our First Amendment rights. But Mayor, if it's all right, I'd like to ask Attorney Stromberg to update us. And if I'm wrong in that, my recollection there, please feel free to correct me.
Councilman Moody and Dr. Whitaker, we did a memo after the memo. You saw it, Dr. Whitaker, my staff did, Jeff Miller and a couple other people. I will forward that memo to you. It goes through the steps that are required for a charter change. And I guess you have not seen that memo. I'll get that to you and be happy to review it at the next council meeting. But at the time, we weren't able to move forward last time because certain time elements weren't met. It was towards the end of, it was before the legislative session. And you have to, for a charter change, you have to submit it to the legislature, obviously. And you have to do it very early on. But we can do that if council so desires by the next legislative session. So I'll forward you that memo that explains the procedure. And if you have any questions, please, or if anybody has any questions, please call me. And we'll also talk about it at the next meeting, I suppose.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Dr. Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, Attorney Stromberg, the next legislative session is upcoming. And is it too late in the process? I know that, I believe, there's a public hearing that has to take place. Is it too late in the process? Or are we still able to submit it for this legislative session?
It's too late, unfortunately. But we're geared up to do whatever council wants. We're geared up to do it the next session after that. We can do it. A lot of stuff has to be done early. As you mentioned, public hearings. You have to submit the changes to, I think, on the first day, the legislature or prefiled, I believe, even. And we were out of the time limits already when it came up. But we know what we have to do, and whatever council wants, we'll do it.
Okay, so at our next meeting, you will brief us on that?
Be happy.
And I believe the change that council had discussed previously dealt with removing the criminal liability language. What I am requesting is that that whole section be rescinded, removed. Because I believe, not only do I think the criminal section is improper, but the citizens, from what I have heard and seen, the citizens are holding council accountable for what happens in the city. They don't necessarily talk about the city manager because they don't appoint the city manager, but they do elect us. And I think that that section greatly limits us as far as reaching into issues that are going on within departments, within our city. We get emails from citizens about issues within city government. And we have been handicapped and limited because of this section 3.11 in responding. Even the lack of response we saw with Councilmember Lucas Burke, the silence and also with how other matters have been handled. And so I would like for that consideration of the whole section as we discuss it to be rescinded if there's no objection as we discuss it amongst council.
I don't believe there are any objections. And I look forward to Attorney Stromberg bringing back that information and the timeline in which we need to submit the requested information for consideration.
And then the last item is that I was made aware of a contract that has been entered into by the city in regards to legal representation pertaining to a defamation lawsuit. And I would like for Attorney Stromberg to brief council at our next meeting because from the information that I've seen, I'm not sure if that is a private lawsuit or a lawsuit against this city. And I believe that contract needs to be discussed. And it appears it needs to be rescinded. And so I would like for that to be on our agenda for our next meeting as well.
Are you referring to the contract as it relates to our former mayor in the litigation with our former attorney?
Yes, and I think that the memo just came to my attention on New Year's Eve that this contract had been entered into. I don't know if you or Mr. Moody or Councilmember Lisa Burke, I don't know if you all were aware of it prior to that that was going to occur. And also, Mr. Battle, I'm not sure if you were aware prior to. But I know that, I didn't have any prior information of that. And I don't know what Mr. Barnes did as well. But I believe that needs to be.
Well, yes, sir. And we will ask Attorney Stromberg to provide any information as it relates to ongoing litigation to that matter within his department. I think he can report that back to us, what is the status of that. And we will ask him to do so.
All right, thank you. Those are the three items.
Thank you, and thank you all for participating today. As I said earlier, I believe this was a very productive meeting. Looking forward to working with each and every one of you as we move our city forward and do the business of the people of the City of Portsmouth. Thank you all. I'll see you next week on the 12th at our city council meeting. This meeting is now adjourned.
All right, have a good day.
Thank you.
All right.